Okay.
All right, we're recording now.
I think we have a call.
We got a full house.
We do.
We missed everybody.
Been a bit.
I sent a note to Yvonne, I guess, in the second camp meeting was canceled. I said, how am I supposed to learn anything? We're gonna keep canceling these meetings.
You're supposed to know it all already.
That's just what I tell my wife.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, hold on, I'm thinking I'm outnumbered here. I didn't say that.
7:01, should we call a meeting to order?
Yes.
All right, well, we have a full house. So we have established the quorum. And let's move to, are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? Is the member of the, are members of the public visible to us, or are they in the background?
Um, there is only one member of the public. And you might want to ask the question again because the person just jumped on the call.
Okay, so I'm inviting members of the public to comment items not on the agenda. If they desire to.
It looks like no one is asking.
Okay, so then we'll move to the consent calendar. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the planning commission minutes from the last meeting? And anyone have any comments or changes to them? Okay, being none, anyone like to put forward a motion to approve this?
I can't, so moved.
Great.
Yes, I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor? Let's do reactions, but uh, there's only a thumbs up, there's no thumbs down. Oh, actually, you call it, never mind, you, you do a roll call, sorry.
You roll call, okay.
Different meeting I was at.
Chair Bodnar?
Yes.
Commissioner Dorian?
Yes.
Commissioner Ahie?
Yes.
Commissioner Merrick?
He's muted.
Oops, he's muted. Commissioner Minsinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
And Commissioner Steinle?
Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Right, great, let's move into our discussion item. Looking forward to this.
You have this one, Guido?
Yeah. So, let me pull up you from beginning. So the last time we met, which I can't seem to recall, but it's been a while. The commission asked staff to do kind of like an after-action review of the projects that have been approved. So on one of my Fridays off from the city, I drove around and tried to find and asked the staff for three or four projects, took some pictures and took some stuff from the original staff reports. And so that's what we're gonna do tonight, a very short meeting. So the goal for tonight is to review the previously approved projects. And for the commission to provide input to staff on what worked and did not work during the development review process. Some of the commissioners may or may not have been on the commission. And then also, the second goal would be to build a culture and a tradition of the planning commission and potentially the DRC to review projects after approval to discuss how as staff we can kind of improve the development review process. And, you know, just in overall, try to improve as a staff in terms of how we approve projects. So, this was actually educational for me because I'm relatively new to the city, 18 months in, but still, still learning about these older projects. So the first project that I went to go visit was 897 San Antonio. According to the staff report, there was about 2,000 square feet of office. And four residential units on the property, which equals out to about 14 dwelling units an acre. You will see me referencing dwelling units an acre in my staff reports. That's important for state HCD when they review our housing element in order for us to, when we pick a site, if we, when we eventually get to that point in the housing element and we say, hey, we think we can do 40 units for the acre for that site, they're gonna turn right around and say, hey, Guido and John, prove to me you've actually done it in the past. So you will see me often quote that in my staff reports. There's another project down on El Camino, Mercha, his project is actually 69 dwelling units an acre. So that actually bodes well for the city in terms of our housing element. We're able to show, we're able to build at higher density. So this is the actual design that was approved. And this was the actual building that I visited a couple Fridays ago. You can compare and contrast, it's relatively the same, no major changes to the design. The next one, I visited a 467 First Street, a three-story project, about 17,000 square feet.
Excuse me, Guido?
Yeah.
But before you move on to this project, you might want to ask the commissioners if they have any questions about the last?
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If the commissioners would like.
Guido, is this the one that's at the corner of San Antonio and Sherwood?
Yes, it's near our residential neighborhood, yeah.
Right, but that's, it's down, down near where the restaurants are and that sort of thing on the, at the bottom of San Antonio.
Yeah, then there's a daycare little center right up the street. And then I took this picture across the street, across from San Antonio, there's another multifamily apartment across the street.
Right.
So let me ask a question. I think it's worth having a discussion about each of these. And so are we gonna table that for the end, or how do you wanna approach this?
However you'd like to do it, either as you go through them one by one, or if you want to save all of the discussion for the end, that's fine too, whatever the?
So I, I think, I, I think it's worth, why don't we each kind of, why don't we do it one by one?
Okay.
Unless, at the end, you, I mean, do you have some overriding like sort of thoughts about, about this one in particular, for example, like how close you think it came to the intended design? Or the approved design?
You know, when I visited the properties, honestly, a lot of the, the, the materials and the layout, as a city planner, I was very impressed with the layout and the materials. And how things were stepped back for all of these projects, that was an overall impression that I had. But I defer to the commission in terms of their thoughts and inputs, so.
Yeah, this, you know, I was, I, was anyone else on the commission when we approved this? Sorry, I wanna see everybody.
I was not, but I do have thoughts on it.
Okay, I'm interested in hearing your thoughts, because I'll say, you know, this was like a challenging corner triangular lot. And I remember that there wasn't a whole lot more that they could do with the, with the design. And so I felt like they were efficient with the way they programmed it. But I really am not a fan of the materials and colors that as they turned out. I don't know how to explain it, but every time I see it, it, a little bit, it bothers me. And I, when I look at, when I look at the original design and I see the, like, you know, what we saw looked like wood panels or maybe metal brown, sort of like what on the Packard Foundation building. And the stone is more creamy. And what we ended up getting was more like a peachy stone and a pink instead of brown. And it's like made a real difference. And, and also the materials look slightly, like they had slight tweaks. I mean, the design is the same, right? And the program, I think, is still solid, but the way it looks aesthetically from the outside isn't as like handsome as I would have liked it to come out. And so I think it's really important when we look at materials that we are really discriminating. And, and then when we settle on the colors, like, they should come back with those colors and materials and we need to hold them to it. And the other thing that I kind of took away from it is, and I remember, I believe someone mentioning that they didn't think that the stainless metal was a great look for residential. And I will say, when you go back to the image of it, it, it does have kind of a fold. It, it would have benefited maybe from a different color, like a, I mean, I, I do think that it has a little bit of a sterile, it brings a little bit of a sterile quality to it. So, I mean, I think they came really close, but then the differences are pretty, kind of made a big impact on me. So I'm, I'm curious to see here what you, what you all think. I mean, I do think that they, the program is solid for how they're using this space, but I don't love the materials.
Yeah, I, I kind of echo what you're saying. When I see the drawing of what was submitted, it's very different from how it turned out from a material perspective. And to be honest, when I drive by, I kind of have the same reaction to the sort of pinky peachy color. It just, I don't, I don't find it attractive, whereas this picture is not bad, so.
And you'll notice the balconies, they have these clear stories on the balconies on the rendering, and they have that facade, that siding on the balconies as they exist. And that, the building feels really sterile with that. And, you know, I think the oddness of it on that corner, the program is good. I think that we could have done better on the landscaping at the building itself to soften those, you know, hard lines of the aluminum, you know, doors and windows. It just, it seems really sterile and sort of odd colors. But yeah, when I drive by it, I don't feel great about it. It, it seems like it needs more mature landscaping to soften the look of the building.
Very good, okay.
And it's prominent, you know, when you think about coming into Los Altos, and you're gonna hear me say this a lot, we have to just be really conscious about the gateway to Los Altos. People are leading into the town and, you know, we want them, as they cross over from Mountain View, to feel like, you know, they're entering into Los Altos, and we have what, you know, lusher landscape. Because you're going from commercial to, you know, a residential village versus large commercial. And I'd like it to feel like that.
I had a, some similar comments or thoughts that both of you mentioned. One of the things that I noticed right away was the, the aluminum, the big aluminum windows. I thought that they, something different could have been, whether divided light, a different design, maybe some window sills. The one unit here, the, like, the third little alcove from the left, where there's, on the second alcove from the very left, you've got a little awning over the windows, which is nice. And around the corner on Sherwood, it's a big solid wall with the garage below. And the only thing that really broke it up a little bit was a little awning, which was better than nothing. But I think the window design and this, somebody mentioned the aluminum doors. I wondered if that would have made it softer. And, and, and less whatever it is. And they, on the corner too, they have this stone, what, it's a little monument, it's a decorative thing. If it was in the backyard, you'd call it part of an outdoor kitchen. The picture doesn't show it. Which, it's, it's just to the right of the, the Japanese maple in the picture, set back a little bit. It does break up that roundness of the corner. But I really, the, the windows, I think, just turned, turned it off for me.
Well, this is all really good feedback. The commission is gonna have a handful of multifamily and other projects coming the next two or three months. So really tying down applicants with the, the color board and materials that we do ask them to submit is important. And, and letting them know from a staff perspective that, you know, we, you know, we will be following up and making sure we implement the intent of the commission, so.
When you look across the street at the, the, I don't know, several units that John Vidovic built, you get the feeling of that, you know, landscaped screening. And I think, you know, this is in sharp contrast to that just across San Antonio Road.
Yeah, and the, I, this, this is basically around the corner from me, so I, I see it practically every day. And it's a very dull building. I mean, I, I agree with everything that everybody said about it. It also seemed to take forever to get anybody in. It's, it was sitting empty for a long time. I don't know what the reason for that was. And just down the street from it, you know, the, the restaurants are very colorful. Armadillo Willys is practically next door, and it's got that sort of red brick look, which this doesn't have. The, the original rendering looked as though it might fit with that. And it doesn't at all, as it turned out. In fact, it's sort of a, a yellowy beige. And, and it, it does have an extraordinarily sort of sterile and, and uninteresting look about it. And right across the street from it, of course, is the, the, you know, a very nice set of buildings where Stanford is the, I forget the name of the project that was across there, but the, the, which is nicely landscaped and, and is, is well laid out. And, and this is San Antonio, I mean, this is the, the, the grand entrance to Los Altos for a lot of people. And, and this doesn't really do much for anybody. It, 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 it failed in a certain way, I think. I, I agree, the design as presented in the drawing looks quite interesting, it looks as though it would fit. And this, they just don't seem to have managed to accomplish that, so. And it makes me think of that building that we were looking at, at one of our earlier meetings in the, in the misty past. The, the one up next to the Republic Bank Building, which is another difficult, and I think Roni was right to point this out, this is a very difficult lot. And this is a problem with difficult lots, and, and in what little space there may still be along El Camino Real, I'm not sure how much there is left there that isn't either, you know, already approved or, or occupied by stuff. There are lots of difficult lots there. They tend to be very narrow, they tend to be somewhat deep. And it's, it's hard to know what to do with those. And this, I think, is a, is a, an example of the problem that can result from that. And it's something we would need to, to want to pay attention to. The, the, you can use color and you can use form to do something with a, a strange looking thing. And they, they had a good idea that they don't seem to have been able to put into operation, so. That, that is unfortunate, because it, it's an opportunity that was missed.
I'd like to echo one more thing, I think, two, two of you said now about the entrance. I totally agree with the concept of the entrance. You're just coming into Los Altos. It should be a nice-looking building. We're proud of our city. And it's the same thing as you mentioned just a minute ago by the building next to the First Republic Bank. That is a really nice sight in that the exposure going north or south on San Antonio and coming in on Cuesta. You've got an opportunity to have a really attractive building there. Like you said, the gateway into, into downtown. So I agree with your comments there.
Um, I was just gonna quickly say, I, I think that, um, you know, this is technically a mixed-use building. And I think that some, sometimes I feel like we kind of have an issue with, with projects that are mixed-use. Because we don't really have any. So, one, when they finally do, you know, propose one, it's kind of that balance of, it, does it look too commercial or does it look too residential? I tend to think that, I think in, for Los Altos, I think it should maybe sway a little bit more residential. But, you know, I think this project is, is a good example of, of maybe how a mixed-use building could be a little bit more on the residential side, so. And then also the, the stairwell that's in the center. You know, just something to look out for, for future projects when they kind of put a lot of emphasis on, on a detail that, that maybe isn't that important, you know, for kind of the use of the building. So maybe making sure that the, the main entry has more prominence than kind of a stairwell entrance. So I think, I think it's just a learning, a good learning tool for, for future projects to look at, you know, programmatically, what can we kind of do for future developments?
So Chair, Chair Bodnar, do you want me to continue, or?
You know, it's, it's appropriate, your next one is 467 First Street, which I recall, I think, I was on, I was on the planning pitch for all these. But I recall there was a lot of discussion about this being a gateway building. When you come down San Antonio, turning off Foothill, and so that's, that's, that's the perfect segue.
Yeah, so this is a three-story, 17,000 square foot office building, 13 parking spaces at grade and 29 at a one-level below-grade garage. This was taken across the street, and I don't know, it was just, there was just a parking lot across the street that, that I took it from. This was the project, and then let me pull up the, oh, I forgot to add the, I bet, I apologize, sorry guys, I forgot to add the, the rendering from the original project. Sorry about that. So. So that is the project. I thought I had it in another. Darn it. Did I not put it in? One second, I apologize.
Don't beat yourself up, it's okay.
Sorry, no, I. No, I did not. I apologize, sorry about that, guys. So, yeah. So maybe for the commissioners who are on, if you want to share your experience in terms of reviewing it, you did say it was a gateway-type project?
Yeah, yeah, so I remember this one being pretty controversial. And, you know, I, I belatedly asked you, Guido, this afternoon to share the comments. I, I think what would be really interesting when we do these is also to pull the minutes from the meeting when it was approved by the planning commission.
Okay.
And also pull the meeting minutes from the city council, because what you'll end up hearing is the issues that people had with the building. And I think, for example, this one was a common refrain that we hear, where it's like, it's too big, it's not attractive, it's like too cold and modern, or. I, I loved, did, I do, I really like this building. I think it is contemporary, but I think the materials that they used are really high quality. I love that they have this outdoor space. It also was a challenging lot. It like, has, it goes, I think, onto that, is it an alley right behind it? I mean?
Yeah.
And the, the parking was very, you know, controversial and, and the how they were gonna enter. They were closing a lot of, I mean, what was there before, it was closing a lot of openings. And, you know, people were concerned about the traffic that was gonna be generated. And at the corner, this picture doesn't, I don't think, does it justice. I think a, like, a better picture is actually the gateway image where you are coming and you see the corner, because right at that corner is a, a piece of art, you, you could say, you know, like, it's a circular sculpture. And I remember we had a lot of discussions about that, making that like something special and treat it like public art. And that was part of the project and part of the approval. And I actually, it's very simple, but I, it, it speaks to me, I like it a lot. And so this building, by compared to the other one, like, I think, has consistently been utilized. I don't know, I'm not sure if it's been occupied the entire time, but it always seems like there's some, someone, act, action at the bottom. So it feels like it has served the purpose of creating office space that we really needed in our downtown. I'm curious how the parking has played itself out. If we, if, if, you know, planning has heard of any complaints about it. Or the access egress and ingress, if that's ever been an issue, that was a concern. You know, it's like you hear about these issues that are gonna be a concern, and then they don't play themselves out, and then you know for the next time that the alarmist, you know, concerns may, are maybe too conservative, too alarmist. So I'm really interested, this is a very, you know, contemporary look. Not everyone likes this kind of design. I do, but I'm interested in hearing what others think about this building.
I mean, personally, it's one of my favorite buildings downtown. I, I think that the statement that you have had the architect make as a gateway building just resonates. You know, use of materials, the window setbacks, the, you know, on some of the windows, they have the kind of eyebrows coming down off of them. Even the way they treat, the material treatment for the garage, when the garage is open or closed, it has that, you know, beautiful wood finish look. I, I think it came out really great. It's, it is a, a little bit of a public art statement. So. And was it like the render, I mean, was the rendering like this, so, Roni?
Yeah, I mean, I wish we, I wish we had it, but I, I mean, I do think that it is true to the design. I remember it had the wood flat, I mean, these, not wood, the, the flat.
Flat.
And the, the art circular is, is exactly as, I believe, designed. But, you know, when you put them side by side, you always notice differences, and.
The sidewalk configuration, you know, we talk about First Street a lot. I like the width of the sidewalk configuration, and it brings the landscaping up against the building, so it softens it, and people don't feel like they're walking into the building. Yeah, I, I think this is really well done.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's one of my favorite buildings as well. I think that the, the corner condition, I think, is really successful. Which is like the real gateway kind of in. And even the other side, the opposite side with the planters, and, and the sidewalk, I think, is, is really successful. So, yeah, and it's pretty obvious the, the materials are very high-quality. You know, figuring it out. And, and that's probably what our standards should be for a lot of these projects in terms of materials. But, um, yeah, hopefully.
I mean, it may be worth, Guido, just like sending us after the, the minutes just to share, just so, because I, I really do have this, this memory of this one being really controversial. And and I, I think, you know, it's an example of like, oh, this came out really well.
Yes, I will do that after the meeting.
Cool.
That's, it's another good point as well, because of the, because I think it was empty for a while. And I think that Sereno Group, I think, just occupied it recently. So it, it is interesting though, because I think a lot of these projects, like you were saying, Roni, that they kind of expect a certain scenario or situation with certain tenants, and then that obviously changes. And then maybe, you know, we think that there's gonna be four or five commercial tenants, and it ends up being maybe one big commercial tenant. So, you know, I think that we have to kind of also have some foresight when we kind of look at these projects sometimes.
I, my office was downtown, and so I went by this building. I followed it while I was being proposed. And my initial memory of it was, here we have this architect from Palo Alto that's putting this building on the sidewalk that he was had custom doing, and it's just gonna be right there. And I thought, geez, here it is, this nice corner of the gateway, and here's this building with a lot of stuff, big. And, you know, I was by there today, it took, I've seen it more than one time, but I drove by again today. It really looks nice, I have to admit. They did a really good job. The landscaping has matured, it's filled in. Landscaping on San Antonio is nice, they have a nice sidewalk. They have access to the, somebody mentioned the parking. You can get in from San Antonio if you're going south on San Antonio Road. Or if you're downtown, you can, and you can go in the parking garage, or you can go buy Los Altos hardware and come back in the alley that we discussed in the last couple of weeks, behind the First Republic Bank, on that proposed project there with that little tiny alley. That alleyway gets to their parking lot. And I gotta admit, the parking lot, it's just not a plain macadam surface. It's got nice landscaping and milkweed or whatever that could is, it looks nice. And I think only a couple suggestions I had. I think only a couple of suggestions I had would be the, and by the way, I like the round steel posts in the front. And then they're broke up on the left side by the concrete more rectangular pillars and then the inset. I think that maybe had the second floor been inset four or five feet. We've talked about that in other buildings or the concept. And maybe the third floor, if you look at the, the roof line, the roof line on the third floor actually overhangs a little bit. If it had been, the third floor had been pushed back more and maybe less overhang, it might not have had the same appearance. But I'll tell you, I think it looks nice now and it is as unattractive as what I thought it was a couple of years ago. I'm very, very happy with it. And I think does it, it does a good job coming into town.
I, I would echo what everybody has said. I think it's a very nice building. And I think it's a building that has matured well, which is something that we always, we, we, we were guessing, of course, we don't know because things like landscaping change. Trees die, they have to be replaced. The developer is not responsible for what happens 10 years on, but the developer can set the, the groundwork for what's going to happen 10 years on. And I think that's one of the things that we need to think about with the, with the developers is how is this building, what, what do, what do we think this building might look like in 10 years? What do we think we, we, we would want? You know, does the developer have an idea of who might be there or they, are they just proposing, for example, in the mixed-use setting or one like this, which is an office place, just it's space and then it'll get rented out somehow and then whatever. You know, but do they have any plans that way? That's one of the things actually about the, the building just down the street that we were talking about in our last meeting, the, the one that is going to replace Pancake House. And they, they, with all the problems that that building had in its various ways, they did have an idea of what they, they were doing with it. And so that's something we have to think about particularly along San Antonio, which is the, you know, the main street of, Main Street not being the Main Street, that it is really the Main Street of Los Altos. And, and this is, I think, a good example of what we would like to, the kind of thing we would like to see along there. So I think this is, this one is a success, unlike the one before, which turned out not to be so successful. I, I think this is a, a good building that has, that has weathered well.
But I have a question for staff relative to something that Eric said. Educate me a little. Do buildings with first-floor retail, do they have use permits that go along with them that have conditions that they have to keep up over the years? Like Eric mentioned, you know, landscaping, is there some enforcement issue? Some enforcement that the city has so the buildings are always maintained? The way they were submitted? Or is that too Pollyanna, am I thinking?
No, no, it, it's not. Typically, especially with buildings constructed, I'd say within the last 10 to 15 years, do come with an approved landscape plan and we do expect that they maintain those landscape, that landscaping. And if trees happen to die, if shrubs happen to get matted, and they have to take them out, that they replace them with a, a like species that was part of the landscape plan or maybe something that's a little bit better. And we have had a couple of instances of projects along the old communal real where some mature trees have died and we've gone back in and asked them to to replant, well, to take out the dead trees and then replant new trees and, and keep and maintain the landscaping. It's usually tied to the, the approval of the building itself though, and not really the use that goes in the building. And, and in our commercial districts, there are lists of uses that are just permitted by, by the code and others that trigger the need for a conditional use permit. So that's why we try and tie the, the landscaping approval and the landscape plan to the, the approval of the project itself and see that all of that landscaping is installed prior to getting the final on the building.
If I can just add a comment to that, one of the problems is the developer is usually not the owner of the building. And so the, the owner being the successor and interest technically is tied by the, the, the agreements made, but doesn't necessarily have the same investment in, in that and may not pay that much attention to, to what was in the original permitting agreements. So, you know, that, that, that can be a problem. And, and we don't really have, I, I don't believe that, and this is a Jolie question. I don't think she's on. But I, I don't know that we have a particular way to enforce that. You know, but it, it is kind of a problem that you're, you're, the people you deal with in the design area phase are not the people you'll deal with five years, 10 years down the line.
One of the things we've done of late is we have included a condition that says landscaping shall be maintained per the approved plans for a project. And then we require that the conditions of approval for the project get recorded to, on the title of the property. So all the, the current owner, the developer, and then subsequent owners are made aware of the conditions of approval. So it's part of that chain of title and they're, they're notified and should be aware of that if they're, they're purchasing the property.
Okay. Okay. We have a stick.
We do have a stick. We're trying, trying to make it a little bit bigger stick to.
Yeah.
Include people that. And I, I think for the most part, folks do a good job of landscaping, but you know, there's, there's times and I think we're, we're probably on the cusp right now. And this is a separate topic, but you know, with the, the lack of rainfall the last two years, year and a half, we're going to have to take a look at some of our landscape requirements and the types of landscaping that goes in and the maintenance of that landscaping. But we'll talk about them another evening.
Yeah.
Okay, should we jump to the next one? I remember this one too.
So 488 Sierra Al Camino, a five-story building, 21 multifamily units, one level of underground parking and a mechanical parking system. And this one does have 46 dwelling units an acre. Anything above 30 is kind of the sweet spot for state HCD in terms of demonstrating we can build infill housing that's affordable. So this is definitely higher than that. So. So this is the rendering. And then this was the picture I took when I visited the site a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Right near a Jack in the Box. And then I took this on the median, pretty, pretty busy on Al Camino when I went out there. And yeah, it was actually hard to get a picture without cars coming in and out. It seemed like a pretty, you know, pretty occupied building. So.
Guido, I'm curious, have you gotten any feedback how the mechanical parking systems are working?
I have not. Maybe John can comment on that.
No, I, I have not. I, I did go down and look at the project once the mechanical parking system was installed and got a demonstration of it. And, you know, at that point, it seemed to be working just fine. It was kind of kind of unique how each, each person entitled to one of those mechanical parking spaces would have a key fob and would be able to press it and their parking stall would come to where they were so that they could get on, get it, get onto it and then be able to, you know, go to their, their unit. I, I, I'm kind of, it looks like they're still selling some units. I don't know that it's been fully sold out yet. I, I think I'll be interested once it does get fully sold to maybe go down there early in the morning during the, the beginning of the commute hour or the late afternoon at the beginning of the commute hour, just to see how that is functioning. That might be a good, good field trip for the, the commission at some point.
And did it have any below-market rate units in it?
It did. There were three below market, three affordable housing units. I forget. I think there were, was one moderate and two low-income units in order. And that got him the density bonus that allowed the building to go above the height limit. And this was the first five-story building in, in Los Altos. And the first project that I'm aware of that took advantage of the, the density bonus regulations.
Right, because the density, the, the zoning there is 38 density units, sorry, dwelling units per acre. So this at, at 40, whatever it is, 46, that includes the density bonus.
Right.
Yeah. So. I'm always curious about how long it takes for these things to sell out. And I know there, there haven't been so many projects that, that, you know, I guess anybody's been compiling the statistics because again, this is one that sat there for a while. Of course, it took them a while to get the, the final permitting. And I don't know when it opened for sales, but it was not that long ago. And I don't know how, you know, where they, they're sending, but if, you know, I'm curious to know how long it takes to sell out. And I don't know if we have any way of tracking that.
Do we know when they got their occupancy? I mean, when did they finish?
It would have been right, right, right around March of 2020 because I know it was.
A year ago.
It was just before things started shutting down because of the pandemic. We were.
It's rough trying to sell an apartment in a pandemic.
Third-party plan checkers? Is our building division use third-party plan checkers or do we do in-house plan checking of things like this?
We do. We have a, a third-party consulting plan checking office with structural engineers and civil engineers that do the, the plan checking.
Oh, is it Schum's Coda?
Uh, no, it's T R B.
Thanks.
And Struck Tech.
Instruc Tech, yes. Struck Tech does some. But this, this project was unique in that the, the walls that form the basement were all, I don't know if you're familiar with what shockcrete is, where it's rather than a form concrete system, it's where the, the concrete gets blown against the excavated portion to create the, the, the foundation walls and the supporting walls for the, the parking structure. And that was.
Very typical in the, yeah, commercial construction shockcreeds.
Right, right. And it's, I was, I was a bit surprised actually how deep the pit here to accommodate the lift parking spaces. So you have the, the grade level where you drive from your, you know, from the driveway or the, the garage floor level onto the, the lift spot, but then below that.
Right.
Down to accommodate the, the vehicles.
Those are very common in the high-rise buildings in San Francisco. You know, sometimes those excavations go 60 to 100 feet to accommodate four or five levels of the stackers. So.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah. So what, what I remember about this one, and I, I can't remember in what order the El Camino projects have come to us, like where this was, but I mean, this looks like it was approved from, from looking at the planning length to it in 2016. And then they only started building in 2018. It sounds like they only finished in 2020. So a couple of like things that come to mind, just the process, how long that process is for a developer and before they can, you know, see any profit, like what a big, you know, like investment. And it's all about timing. But I do think that the project came out pretty true to the design. When you flip to the next picture, I think it is really true to. But if you look at the top, I remember there was concern about like these parapets and what you would see and from the view that you're showing, which is across the street, you actually don't see any of it. It's there. It's, it's not visible from, to, from a pedestrian point of view. On the other side, behind it, if I recall, there's like two, two-story apartment buildings. And and the El Camino projects have always gotten a lot of resistance, I think, from residents in the area. And though across the street, if I recall, just a little limited direction, like away from Palo Alto, I mean, if you're, you're on El Camino. There, across the street, Mountview, we have like seven, eight, nine-story buildings. So I definitely remember one of the things we talked about is like, this is the, if, if we don't allow five stories, five stories was like a really high bar for a lot of people. They couldn't wrap their head around the idea that Los Altos would allow five stories. And I think I remember some of the arguments that were being made in favor was that if we look, look at what's across the street in terms of like consistency, right, and context. And that though it was significantly higher for us, it is kind of the future and the direction that we are going. And so because they did that, I think, third affordable unit, they were able to get the height that they needed and the higher density. And it is interesting that they still are trying to sell them a solid year plus after. I imagine the affordable ones are long gone. And I'd also, you know, I think it's, I think you know, you noted this, Susan, that it has the lifts. And so if you think about it, it was approved in 2016, which means like we were looking at that maybe a year or even two earlier than that. So this might have been one of the ones where we had to get comfortable with lifts. So like now we're five years down the road. So we should be well-versed and super comfortable with mechanical lift systems because this has been around for a good amount of time in our community. And I'm, I'm interested to hear, you know, one of the things that we, questions we have about El Camino is just like, also the ingress and egress, like what that, how that looks and where deliveries are coming from. And if, you know, the DoorDash and the other delivery, Amazon has space to drop their stuff off. So I'm just wondering how that's all working out.
It's funny you say that because their trash can is out there, garbage can.
Right.
Yeah. No, I, I think wasn't this the building that was caught in the moratorium?
Uh, no, this one got approved just before the moratorium went into place. We updated the CT zoning regulations and the density bonus regulations and then the moratorium was lifted.
So then maybe this was the reason we went into moratorium.
This was the first five-story building and there was wanting to make sure that our density bonus regulations and our CT standards were appropriate for what we were anticipating going to be being brought forward on the El Camino Real.
I have a couple of comments. Number one, I could probably track how many they've sold. What gym has been sold. I'd be curious how many are rented, even though they've been sold. How many remaining? I can see what I can find out. I have access to that data. How much is going to be readily available? I'm not sure at this point, but I, I will do that in, in future time when we can talk. That might be of interest. One, one thing I noticed when I was by the building and by a number of times, two things. Number one, when the Carl's Jr. On the left side gets developed, this, because this subject building just virtually sets on the property line on both sides. When the Carl Jr. On the next corner on the left gets developed, I wonder what it's going to be like and they put a built, a building right up that's right on the property line and the balconies on the left side are looking into this new building. And the same thing goes for the, the right side. You have balconies. And I think is it the clock tower that's next door that the project has already been approved or it's in the prove, prove approval process? I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's correct. It's been entitled.
Okay. Second time I've, I've said this today, the windows, what's with these large plain windows? Why couldn't they have broken them up, done some awnings, done something articulation wise to break up a, a very narrow building? I think, I think potentially has more, more potential appeal. But that's all I have. And the parking, I have not yet seen lift parking. I'm going to check this out. Maybe I can get a, I'll call one of my realtor friends and get a tour and maybe look at an open house. And I can look, look at the lift system as to how they really work. And, and are they really effective?
Um, I'll just quickly say, I, I think that the, the building, I think, is, is successful, but it does feel kind of flat from the front elevation. I think that it, it probably would have been a little bit better if there was like more kind of push and pull, more articulation with those forms. So just something to look out for, for, you know, future projects, you know, knowing how much.
So just something to look out for for, you know, future projects, you know, knowing how much we're gonna really get. Um, and then the, you know, the front entrance, I I always feel like it it could have been like more grand. Um, it seems kind of subtle, um, so that's something that I've always kind of noticed. And then, yeah, the the mechanical kind of stuff on the roof, I always see it um, when I'm at that stoplight. Um, on showers. Um, and so it's pretty, it's pretty visible from this, from the side. So. That's just something that, you know, maybe for future um, projects, we can kind of. Just be aware that they're kind of screening something at least when it's. All the way up on the roof. Um. But overall, I think it's, I think it's great. I think five stories is probably gonna be. There's probably gonna be way taller buildings in a couple of years. So um, yeah. Well, I I have a couple of things. I I hope, Mero's, you're wrong, but you may be right. The and Shelley pointed out something that I think that i- is interesting about this building and some of the older. Older buildings here along the El Camino Real, as opposed to the ones that are being done now, which is that. And and John mentioned this also. There's no place to put. The recycling bins and the trash bins when they have to be picked up. They go out on the street. Um, now, we tend to have a requirement that there be some way to hide this. It's inside the building. Also, I'll bet there aren't any bike racks here. Um, now they the the requirement is that there be bike racks for everybody. Uh, let alone, you know, um, electric vehicle charging and the rest of it. And so. This is probably the last of what we could call the older generation of of. Multi-family buildings of of this style. Um, and all those that have come along, I won't say all those, many of those that have come along since. That time, um, since the moratorium was lifted, especially recently, have had features that these buildings just don't have. And I'm wondering if this building had to have bike racks and it had to have electric vehicle charging, and it had to have a space where the. The 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 mission trails people could pull in and pull around, and you have to have someplace where Uber can can lurk. And you have to have someplace where Amazon can be. Um, and I I will tell you, uh, having it along uh, El Camino Real is very tough. You know, and uh. I I wonder if this building could have been built. In those circumstances. In other words, we may not see much like this, that, and this, to get to Maris's point, this may be why we get to seven stories, because the bottom story is gonna be all. Given over to to these kinds of things unless you have a a really deep garage. Uh, and a place where the places can go in and turn around is 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 a challenge. So that is always a challenge. That's why. We have these narrow lots. This is another one, the ones next to it. Uh, are very narrow. You've got Los Altos Square behind. Uh, because their entrance is right off of Jordan there. You know, it 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 goes back only so far, so there's not much you can do. Uh, with that space, and so that may be a challenge going forward as we have these these kinds of requirements now. Uh. Because when it goes to complete streets, complete street says, we want to see how many bike racks you have. That's about all that they care about is is bicycles. And and so we may not see another building like this on El Camino Real. Which is just something that occurred to me as we were talking.
I I don't know. I. I I'd like to take that in the future. I mean, thi- this is a very typical of what we see. In dense urban areas like San Francisco, there's not a setback for Uber and. You know, the bike racks are typically in the garage, and I'm sure. I would imagine, I don't know, but would love to know if there's could be charging stations down in the garage for this. This is not. Uncommon of really sort of the rest of the urban dense environment. It's just, we're not used to it here.
So my point, Shelley, is that that now we require they be put in. Before, we didn't. In this building, for example, we had to put in bike racks. There weren't any. Right, and we went down to the garage, um, and. We 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 struggled to find a place where we could put bike racks, because there was no space. Where you could put them and have people walk. And have the cars parked, et cetera. So that's, that's, that's the problem I'm talking about, is this, this one would have had to be designed differently. In order to accommodate those things. Because I I don't know if it was. I mean, I I honestly don't know. Maybe I should go take a tour. But uh, you know, that is, that is an issue that now comes up, that didn't come up in twenty sixteen or twenty fifteen when this was being looked at. Uh, nobody cared about bike racks, I don't think, quite yet.
I I I recall that there are, it's like a bike locker room um, next to the mechanical um, equipment down on the lower level and. They are the type of racks that allow a bike to be mounted on the wall kind of vertically. Um, I remember seeing some of those in the building when I was going on a tour there, and I know that. One of the conditions of the, well, it used to be called the Pedestrian Bicycle Commission, was that the. Surface of the driveway ramp going down to the parking spaces be done in a certain. Way so that um, the the shoes that folks that do wear bicycles, the bicycle shoes would be able to. Grip appropriately, and there would be less of a chance for a slip. Uh, so that was, that was thought through, and then I know, also know that there were um. There were some vehicle charging stations being installed, I think, at the stationary. Parking spots and in some of the the puzzle lift parking systems that I think. I'm recalling correctly, some of the puzzle lift parking spaces could be. Uh, upgraded as well to accommodate additional parking spaces in the future, depending on the need of the the owner.
Sorry, sorry.
That that concludes my uh, presentation. I do like the idea of giving the minutes the next time we do this to the commission. Um, so that we can kind of compare and contrast what were the. Concerns versus how it played out, and I think that's a good, another good exercise to do. And uh, yeah, sorry about the the second project, didn't put the elevation on there, uh, try to catch that next time, but um. Yeah, that that was the, that was my presentation to the commission for tonight, so.
Great. Thank you for that. Um, that was. I love, I love doing that. We called it, uh, the first time we did it, the good, the bad, the ugly. But I I think your title is better.
I I think we should, you know, um. Let the commissioners know that when we can meet in person again, that uh, I I thought it was always productive for. Uh, the commissioners to go around as a group and take a look at some of these sites together, and we would post it as a regular meeting. We could. We can certainly, you know, have, get a van and have that available and take the entire commission and. Um, post each site that we'll stop at and take a look at in the future, because it's. It's, it's one thing to do it online, look at some pictures and some elevations. It's completely different. Um, experience to go to a site and be able to walk around a building and. And take a look at it and really get that close-up experience.
Okay.
John, is there any discussion about when meetings may be in person, or are they gonna stay remote or?
There's, there's no discussion yet in it's uh. About that, and we're partially waiting on the uh, city council chamber upgrade to be completed. Uh, there's been a couple of hiccups there that they're working through. So I I think once we have that facility back up and available, it'll probably get us um. More specific in terms of a date and a time that we'll all be meeting back together again.
Is there a law to keep things at least hybrid so people don't have to leave their homes and find babysitters and. Be able to come to a meeting if they want?
Yes.
John, Anita Enander here, um. Lynette asked me to sit in for her. She's stuck in a VTA meeting. And we did get word from the California League of Cities. That the governor, when, when all the. Other things change on June twelfth, they are going to leave in place. The. Order and the options for cities to, or jurisdictions of all sorts, to continue to meet. Um, remotely so that that, you know, get thrown automatically into you gotta go back to in-person meeting. Um, and to leave flexibility for cities to kind of. Evolve their own individual ways into whatever their new reality is gonna be, and. We don't know what the final word will be. There is legislation. Um, pending that would compel some cities, mostly larger cities, not ours. To offer a certain level of hybrid and and um. Uh, virtual meeting, but that's all up in the air right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so looking at our agenda, which I just lost, let's see if I can find it. I think it was commission reports next. Yeah, no, yes, commissioner reports and comments.
Let's see, I can report on the city council meeting from May the twenty, yeah. Um, relative to the planning commission, there was a lot of discussion about the Halsey House. Um, and what, and future study sessions for the Halsey House and. The decision was made to um. Bring on board some technical expertise to look at the building from several different angles, like Paige and Turnbull, who's a historic architect, is gonna be looking at it. Um, DJ Powers will be looking at it, and the Architectural Resource Group will be looking at it, and. So um, the city council has four options that they want this group to look at, so that will be. Coming back to them um, before anything is decided about Halsey House. And then there was a um, not relative to planning commission, but just to report back, there was about a. Five-hour meeting um, relative to a resolution. Um, regarding the situation with councilperson Li Yang, and. There was a resolution voted three to two in favor. And the resolution will be published with all of the corrections and. I mean, I I don't, I'm not gonna opine on it, but just to let you know, that was a seven-hour meeting and. There were eighty speakers and seventeen letters, and. It was quite a heavy lift for everybody involved, so. Meeting ended at two AM. I think I should get to skip my next meeting and take one next year, so. Anyways, um, that's what happened, but Halsey House will be coming back before it even comes to the planning commission. That was really, uh, that was it.
I, sorry, I had a quick question. Um, I saw that the priorities were discussed by the council. Um, and I saw that nine-nine-nine Fremont was. Um, not like a main priority, but it was on their list. I was just wondering if it's possible for the planning commission to maybe. Have a introductory um, study session about the specific plan for Loyola Corners. Just because I feel like that would start the process at least where. You know, us, we, you know, we could at least get the ball rolling and discuss it and interpret it and. Um, then kind of go from there. So I don't know if maybe sometime this year we could maybe put that.
Yeah, we can uh, certainly put on your agenda uh. Overview of the uh, Loyola Corner specific plan and the amendments to it that have been uh, approved over the years.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I have. I have a question concerning. The city council meetings I have to. Monitor next week. And being I'm new and so forth. Any insight? You could provide would be helpful. I appreciate what you. Uh, just said now, gave me an idea of what. Transpired. I looked at the agenda, doesn't look like anything. At this point, applies to planning commission. I could have missed something. But any. Information though would be helpful.
You know, you can listen to the, you don't, if you are not available the day of the meeting, you can listen to the recording and you can. Fast forward and go back and forth and um. To, you know, so you don't miss anything, but that's just. Me, I know there's other people who've been doing this longer. If there's any sage wisdom relative to that.
Yeah, I I mean, I I downloaded this little feature that allows me to listen to things in two-point-O and faster speed. If I'm a, if it's not, it doesn't have a topic that is um. Requires us to like opine on if they ever asked us. Uh, to opine on, uh, which also hasn't happened in. Uh, a few terms. Um, then. You know, that's a different situation, but if you're listening after the fact, I would definitely. Speed that up.
That's great advice.
I will, I will be there in living color. I try to sit in on a lot of many, how. I was there, I was there till I think eleven.
As as a member of the Iron Butt Club, um, those few of us who who are there at the beginning and stay till the end, and yes, Shelley, till two AM. Uh, more than one time, um, a comfy cushion.
Um, I have a short report from the April twenty-seventh meeting, which shows you how long it's been since we've had a meeting. The only thing of relevance to us was there was an update and report on the distal circle um. Income uh, housing development and. Some discussion more about the timeframe and the importance of getting community engagement and community involvement as that moves forward.
Okay, um, any other comments? All right, seeing none, I think I can adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Okay, bye, everybody. Bye.